I hope so. Yeah, we all kind of hope so. Yeah. Yeah, but we had to, we had to. I saw you in good shape. Have you been on the six place?
Yes.
Just like you're, he's gonna be fine. I hope so. I believe when I see it. How do I watch? Here you go. Just like this. Attention please. Uh, Mike Ring, the Wilmington City Council Regular Meeting, December 16th, 2021. May we have roll call please?
Jay McKay?
Here.
Abby Snar?
Here.
Victor?
Here.
Perky?
Here.
Eblin?
Here.
Leirman?
Here.
Swindler?
Seeing everyone here, uh, would you stand and join me in the place of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Give a brief, uh, moment of silence, please. Thank you. Well, welcome everybody. Uh, this is gonna be an interesting night. Uh, we've got some new folks that are gonna be joining us on council. I swear them in tonight, plus everybody else. And, uh, I know we're gonna talk about this in more detail later, but, uh, we're gonna be, uh, losing a couple of really effective council members in the coming years. Kelsey and Kristen, I'm sure appreciate your service. Thank you. Before you, you have the agenda. What is your pleasure? Make a motion to be presented and accepted as president.
Second?
A motion second to accept the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any post. Agenda is accepted as presented. You also have before you the meeting minutes of the December 2nd, uh, regular meeting. What is your pleasure?
Maybe accept it as presented.
Have a motion second to accept the minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Any post. The minutes are accepted. Now, uh, we are going to swear in the office of council, even though she has been, uh, clerking for a few weeks here. And I get the honor of doing that, so let's do that, let's just do that.
I had it all planned out.
That's why I left.
I know, you want, she likes to remain low profile. She's got a really important job and she, she does a great job at it, so. If you would raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Andrew Takeronte.
I, Andrea Takeronte.
Do solemnly affirm to support the Constitution.
Do solemnly affirm to support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
And faithfully and impartially to discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me. No, you're supposed to say that.
And faithfully and impartially to discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As clerk of council.
As clerk of council.
Of the city of Wilmington.
Of the city of Wilmington.
Ohio.
Ohio.
I don't do this for real. According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
And this I do as I shall answer unto God.
And this I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations.
That's just me, Mark.
That's alright. The next thing on our agenda is swearing in of public officials. So I think that's gonna be, uh, the mayor. Thank you, Mr. President. And we do have Judge Ruddy, who is gonna swear in one of those, so you can follow the rest. That's alright.
These are no particular order, or at least I didn't sort them. So, if I call you first, doesn't mean I like you the best, but it could. Paul Fear. And Paul, do you want any family members up here with you? I know everybody knows him, but you gotta introduce him.
This is my wife, Colleen, and my daughter, Sarah.
Welcome. Did you write in? I, Paul Fear.
Hi, Paul Fear.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
Or affirm to support.
Or affirm to support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Laws of the city of Wilmington.
Laws of the city of Wilmington.
And faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
To discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As city treasurer.
As city treasurer.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
The city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
And this I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as, as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations.
Oh, gave you two. Okay. My second best friend, Mark. Mark, do you have anybody you want up here?
I sure do. I got a couple of family members that are gonna join me. That have moved to Wilmington after being out of town for a lot of years, but my daughter Kristen, my granddaughter Lexi. Kristen went to school here and, uh, she's, she's enjoying life in Wilmington.
Glad to have you. Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Mark McKay.
I, Mark McKay.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
And faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
To discharge and perform.
To discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As president of council.
As president of council.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations, Mark.
Matt Perky.
See, now that's how you're supposed to.
Oh, Chris. Are you telling me you're making gent work?
It's just you and me, John.
I, Matt Perky.
I, Matt Perky.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
Sorry, Jonathan. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
And faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
To discharge and perform.
To discharge and perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a member of council.
As a member of council.
At large.
At large.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
And this I do as I shall answer unto God.
And this I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations. That was yours. Nick Eblin.
Thank you.
Mayor, is none here?
No.
Okay, uh, raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Nick Eblin.
I, Nick Eblin.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
The laws of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
And faithfully and impartially.
And to faithfully and impartially.
To discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of council at large.
As a member of council at large.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations.
Michael Snar. No family Michael?
Can never get any takers.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Michael Snar.
I, Michael Snar.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
And faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and impartially.
To discharge and perform.
To discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of council, second ward.
As a member of council, second ward.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations.
I know his lady friend.
Thank y'all for the introduction.
No, you have to introduce her.
My lovely wife, Hannah. And my strongest supporter.
That's true.
Yes. She's the one that gets the votes, boy. That's true, that's right.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Bill Lerner.
I, Bill Lerner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
The laws of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
And faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of council, third ward.
As a member of council, third ward.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
The city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I shall do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations, Bill.
Michael Albright.
This is my beautiful wife, Isabel.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Michael Albright.
I, Michael Albright.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
And faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To discharge and perform.
To discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of council at large.
As a member of council at large.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall, so I shall answer unto God.
Welcome back. Those of you that don't know, Michael served on the council previously and now he's coming back for a second sentence. I mean. Bob Alden. Bob is our newest member of council. And you've seen it done, you know the routine. Glad your family come with you and you're going to introduce them.
Yep, this is my wife, Chris, and this is my youngest daughter, Annie.
Welcome. Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Bob Alden.
I, Bob Alden.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
The laws of the city of Wilmington.
And faithfully and impartially.
And faithfully and partially.
To discharge and perform.
To discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of council, fourth ward.
As a member of council, fourth ward.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Of the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Welcome back.
Christie?
Nope, I think you, that's in a minute.
Did I forget somebody?
You're gonna, you're gonna do that in your next section.
Next section.
Oh. I'm done.
For now.
For now, we have, uh, one more person to swear in. Judge Ruddy is gonna perform this, uh, swearing.
So, we're gonna do a different view because John's getting these two beautiful views in every photo blog. So, we're gonna get Bill and Paul.
He's gonna discharge, he thinks he's a judge or something?
Yeah. I'm allowed to pick guns. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming. We were gathered here tonight to join together this man and this.
Or what? That wasn't it?
No, that's not.
You don't want a ceremony?
Paul's won a ceremony. Wait a minute, you said the Blue robe marriage? Whoa. I didn't say anything about marriage.
Are you going, Andrew?
He didn't tell me, so maybe I was.
I did.
It was somebody else, maybe.
We, we have more fun. This is city council.
Who do you have with you?
I have no way affiliated here.
I, I swear. I want to introduce serving.
This, this is my girlfriend.
My wife.
Shelby Bowman. Uh, my parents are in the back, Rod and Nancy McKay, and also my brother, I want to thank them for being here. They're a little under the weather, but, uh, they're, they came and, uh, it is, it is very much appreciated. And all of you know my cousins and.
Tim, I'm kinda glad I'm not up there.
Okay. Ready, Albright?
I, Jonathan McKay.
I, Jonathan McKay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And to faithfully and impartially.
And to faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As member of council, first ward.
As member of council, first ward.
Wilmington, Ohio.
Wilmington, Ohio.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
And this I do as I shall answer unto God.
And this I do as I shall answer unto God. Thank you very much.
Is there another one you want, please?
Soon as they're finished, we'll. We have to say with this, anyway. Alright, I think we can give all the incoming, uh, council members a hand. And that's gonna get down, it's one of the more interesting moments, uh, in a swearing in ceremony. That even talks, uh, the mayor wearing his Christmas suit. Alright, moving on. Uh, we have a public hearing for a rezoning request from Richard Steincolt trustee, Eddie Jean Steincolt bypass trust to rezone 147.403 acres of real property, including parts, which is more commonly known as 3,014 Romback Avenue and 3,167 Progress Way, from our, our rural residential to L1 Lite Industrial. The public hearing is now open. Anyone that wishes to speak to this topic, uh, please come forward. Pretty quiet. No one has a comment? Anyone from council? Alright, we will now close the public hearing. Thank you. And that's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, just a couple of quick things. Pitt County Health Department walk-in code, blue vaccination, clinics on Tuesday, Wednesdays, Thursdays, through December 22nd, wonderful. My goodness, make sure, if you don't have the shot yet, my wife just lost another blasphemy. Who didn't get vaccinated? It just, it just breaks your heart. Uh, and a big thank you to all of the participants in our Adopt a Family event, uh, Pitt County Ho-Ho Shop. We were able to adopt 34 children for. Congratulations to our two newest sergeants, who will be sworn in next council meeting in the new year, Bob Wilson and Morgan Wages. Big shout out to them. And congratulations to our dispatcher of the year, Terry Murphy. Officer of the year, Jack Coats. And crime fighter of the year, Sylvester. Elliot Sylvester. I love bragging on these people. Advance and things like that. Code Enforcement, I think you guys all got the copy of that. That keeps moving along very well. Remember, really appreciate what you guys are doing for, to, to back down. Really appreciate. Uh, Steve, now I'm going to introduce our new director of public transportation. I want everybody to meet. Her name is Jessica Powell. Hold up front here with me, Jessica. I want to cherish you to death.
Not as proud as Rod did me.
Yeah. She's already married.
You have, you have family, but.
I do have family. You want them to come up? This is my husband, Joshua. This is my son, Jackson, and my son, Jensen.
Thanks for coming, guys.
I'm putting my picture in.
I had a phone, but you lost me.
Well, as I said, Jessica is our new director of transportation. She comes to us with over 11 years of public administration experience in Hamilton County. She has worked in various departments and roles, including project manager, contract, and property manager, and operations manager. The city is gaining a real asset in transport hardware with Jessica's management and public administration experience. Jessica lives in Goshen, Ohio, with her husband Joshua, their two boys, Jackson and Jensen, and their dog, Max. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you for coming. I'm excited about starting.
Glad to have you.
Come on, Yoda's over here. John. One, two, three.
We're releasing two council members this year, which is a, uh, which is a sad thing. I so appreciate you two. I don't want to present each other, you with a plaque and appreciation of your service and dedication to the city wonderful and its citizens. Kelsey. Christie. I want to get between you. Makes me look good when I get. I love calling.
Nope.
And before you leave, our director of public utilities, Rick Shaper, has something that you would like to say.
Oh, he didn't sit down and chew on.
Well, let's get him around.
So, obviously, I have to thank Kelsey and Christie for all the leadership and support to my department. And really, that goes for every council member I've worked with, um, since I've been here. In many towns, the person of my tradition has to fight for every little thing. And, um, and go forward to the other. She comes for asking questions, but supports the department's commitment of community. Kelsey always was used in the tunnel. When I got here 40 years ago, I found what felt like a mountain of, of problems. Um, early on, I did a memo for the, I wanted to, or for the water committee with a map that was 19 pages long, listing all the problems that I found. As your support, we have addressed all those problems that were on that list. We have a new list now, but we'll work to that too. A big part of your legacy will forever be the proliferation of our drinking water. The decision of fate before my arrival, when I read all the minutes for all the meetings, what I was talking about, and I admire your fit, your perseverance and your dedication for improving public health. I know it took longer than we wanted to, to get turned on, but I am proud that we were able to stop adding floodwater to the water this year. There'll be a lot to appreciate in Wilmington because it's you, you're up there. But thanks for everything. It was great.
And both of these ladies, uh, have a working legislation there next time. So they'll, they'll go out, uh, with a bang. Thank you, Mr. President.
Got to crop out the, uh, pot of leeks.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, you have a joint recreational district. Letter of appointment.
You're just renewing Taylor and Brad Reynolds. And it just takes no approval. It's in, it's in the back, in that bag.
Are they here?
No, it's just that you present your appointments to council for a motion of approval at all, just a simple motion.
Okay, so showing to the Flint County Joint Recreational District Agreement, I submit for your confirmation that names appointments made by me to serve on board trustees, I now declare following to serve. Taylor Stucker, appointment expiring at December 31st, 24. Brad Reynolds, appointment expiring at December 31st, 25. I trust you see the thoughtfulness placed in these selections, especially considering the quality of character and experience and judgments they all bring to the board. I have full faith that these trustees will advocate and execute in the interest of the community, and I'm grateful that they have accepted the offer to serve. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me during any questions. Thank you in advance for your attention to this work. I'd like to have a motion to approve this. Second, have a motion, second, to approve the appointments. All favors, others say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're welcome. Auditor Vance.
Uh, nothing tonight, Mr. Governor.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schottiger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if any, did you want to take a 30-second break in case anybody wanted to leave?
Well, actually, somebody did just sneak out. My family. But if anyone would like to leave.
He just wants to thank the dry advice.
I have no legislation tonight, just a couple of things I want to mention. Mr. Shaver had an article dealing with stormwater utility fee. I just want to let you guys know that your office did not receive any phone calls regarding that article. I, my office did not receive any phone calls regarding that article. And.
I received one phone call.
Mayor's office received one.
No questions, just a conversation.
Yeah, and it was basically, they were confused because they didn't think that you could do utility fees without voter approval. So they had to be educated on that. So we did have, and then I, we even went a little step further. You know, I never do this, I went to Facebook to see if there are any questions about it on there. Of course, there were some comments, no real questions about it. And then on the news journal website, there was two questions on there that I shared with Rick. And as of this afternoon, that was, those were the two. One had to do with, basically, if we're doing this fee, is it going to be offset from the sewer rates, sewer fee? And that's something we've already addressed before in the past. And basically, what we've told you before, we're building a new plant, and because we're able to divert the stormwater, the money that we were using for the stormwater from the sewer, we're not asking for increases at this time for the sewer department. And that's because we're able to divert that. But for being able to divert the stormwater expenses, building this new plant, we would have had to come to council with a potential rate increase. So that was the first thing I wanted to address. The second one was, if this was improper use of sanitary sewer funds, why wasn't this known earlier and addressed sooner? Legit, obviously a legitimate question. I do know that various city officials going back, many administrations had this conversation, but it wasn't until, you know, the mayor's administration allowed us to actually take on this situation and rectify it. It's never popular, never popular to put a new fee on a utility bill, but it was discussed in the past. It should have, it should have been done sooner, but it's something that was done now. So those were the only two questions I have received regarding stormwater utility fee. I know that you all have been, you've been discussing, you know, how we want to address this in the future. I just want to give you some insight of, you know, people may, maybe hearing some stuff out there, but we're not, I'm not getting calls. And I invite, I invite those if you have questions about stormwater utility fee, and Mr. Shaver does as well. So I wanted to mention that. The second thing I want, does anyone have any questions about that? The second thing I want to mention on the finance portion of the agenda tonight, you will find the South Street Safety Project, where we're taking money out of the permissive tax and we're supplementing it with the general fund. And Auditor Vance can help me with this as well, because we've spent quite a bit of time discussing this. This went to council before, when you approved the supplement, I don't know if supplemental is the right word to use, to the permissive tax fund to pay ODOT for our portions of the South Street Safety Program. That ODOT bill is due, we need to pay it. Unfortunately, the county will not release those funds through permissive tax until the project is complete. So what we want to do, and you can jump in at any time, what we want to do is reverse, if I'm using wrong finance terms, please sorry, reverse appropriate the permissive tax funds and supplement from the general fund so we can pay ODOT. And then we'll use those permissive tax funds for something else next year, like street paving or other projects. So that's basically what's happening. It's a timing issue. The money from permissive tax is not going to be available to pay ODOT, so we need to take it out of the general fund and we'll use those permissive tax funds for something else next year. Did I cover that, Auditor Vance?
You did a very nice job.
Okay. So when you see that, I just want to bring that. But I don't have anything else. You guys have any questions for me?
And just clarifying for the record, it's the Sugar Tree South Street Safety Intersection.
Yes. And I'm going to miss one of the.
Thank you.
Any Rombach, any Rombach Avenue updates?
No, I haven't really, they're still doing stuff out there, like they were, they were doing some, I don't know if you were out there today. They were doing some work out there today and stuff. So you'll see little bits and pieces of work out there during the winter and stuff. Mainly waiting to get the polls in so we can get the new signals. But other than that, it's going to be pretty quiet during the winter, and then you'll see a really bump up in the spring.
Thanks, Brian.
Yep, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Moving into council committee reports. City Revitalization Committee, Mr. Snar.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. City Services Committee, Mr. Evelyn.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Ms. Ficker.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three pieces of legislation this evening. The first item, I'm very proud to ask for our third reading on ordinance 2157, which is our budget. We have been able to get this through in three separate readings, which I'm really proud of. So I like going down on that note. As chair of the Finance Committee, hopefully you have given everyone ample time to review this, feel good about it, or ask questions, meet with department heads, which is always the intention. So do we have any further questions about the budget that we need to direct to each other? Or department heads, auditor, anyone who's involved in that?
Rick, do you want me to address your question that we discussed earlier? Councilman Evelyn pointed out, and I don't remember which line I did it was, that there was a duplication of lines between the two funds. And rather than trying to amend this document, I believe the best course of action would be to go ahead and pass it. Sometime after the first of the year when we have supplementals, we will just do a negative supplemental to whichever line is the one we don't want to use. If that suits everyone rather than.
Is there a scripter there? Is there a law director?
Yeah, I can give you a little additional in the scripters there. Yeah, I do.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll just do that after the first of the year. Thank you.
I would like to thank Auditor Vance, as you may know, I was under the weather a little bit last council meeting, and I called her with some questions about carryover and additional, additional things like that. And she answered everything.
Wait, I'm sorry, was it just a duplicate of the same?
It's the same line, it's the same.
Accidentally?
Yes.
I would say that would be a scripter's there.
So we might not even have to reverse it.
Yeah.
But anyway, I wanted to thank her for her help and guidance on that, and she answered everything I had. So I am, I'm good to go. So thank you.
I had a brief conversation with Mary Kay two weeks ago as well. I think we kind of philosophically agree. I always have, you know, I have some great questions, like if we anticipate this, shouldn't this be in the budget? But we kind of landed on the right mindset for that, which is where it involves people, it should be in the budget, where it involves property or other things we can adjust later. And I think that the budget does a good job of that. I know I also beat this dead horse at our last meeting too about what happened, the meeting I missed. One email I got two months ago was a request for Main Street Wilmington. I didn't know that that came up. It was asking for an additional 20,000, $15,000, I think. Was that discussed, or is that, I didn't see it in the budget, so I didn't know if it was.
It wasn't specifically.
Okay.
It just wasn't presented, but.
Okay. So there's a, I, I don't have anything else. I have one more note, but it's not in my head, so I'll save it and ask later if I think of it.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, for all of the really healthy discussion during budget season, department heads, Mary Kay, your team. Everyone did a really, a really nice job. Thank you. With that, then I will ask for the third reading on ordinance 2157.
Have a motion by Fickers, second by Snar, for the third reading of the budget ordinance 2157. Since this is the third reading, can we have a roll call, please? And it's the budget.
Ms. McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Ficker.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Oh, answering aye. May we have a third reading, please?
An ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenses and other expenditures and creating necessary funds for set appropriations of the city of Wilmington, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 22.
For passage.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Motion for passage by Fickers, seconded by Snar for passage of the ordinance 2157. Roll call, please.
Snar.
Yes.
Ficker.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes. Yes.
Ordinance 2157 passes.
All right. That sounds good, guys. All right, our next item, we have three readings on ordinance 2159, making supplemental appropriations. I will go through all of these. The first one is for $268,000. This one you may have noticed just due to the significant amount of money. I don't know, Mary Kay, if you want to. This was really somewhat overpaid us, and now we're, we've got to pay that back. So that's getting that right there. The rest of these are essentially cleanup for the rest of the year.
Correct.
And I don't know if you have any individual questions about any of these. Happy to walk through those, but we have quite a few.
Do, in your packet, in the packet? Oh, it's in a separate.
Right.
Ordinance. You did make a couple of change on that one, not the one that's stapled in your packet. Put the note to the right side.
Yeah, we have it here.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions on these additional supplementals? I will move to get first reading on ordinance 2159 by Title Only.
Second.
Motion by Fickers, seconded by Swindler, first reading ordinance 2159. All in favor, signal to the others saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give second and third reading of ordinance 2159 by Title Only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
Ficker.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
All in favor, may we have a second, third reading, please?
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Ficker.
Yes.
Ordinance 2159 passes.
Thank you. The last item this evening is three readings of ordinance 2160, making miscellaneous transfers. Similarly, this is pretty much cleanup for the end of the year. This is why you see so many of these on here. The first two, so item A, that's from the fire sheet, that is needed to cover expenses for the remainder of the year. And same thing with item C. And then the rest of these are year-end entries. We try to anticipate those the best that we can. I know the dollars are always moving.
Great. We had a conversation earlier, and it would be nice if sometime we would, when we have, I always forget by the time you get to the end of the year, how painful this can be trying to second guess ourselves to get to the end of the year and not have something crop up. And, you know, if it's a bill, we just won't pay it. But when it comes to salaries and paying our employees, we do the best to make sure that those dollars are there without being overly appropriating to those. But perhaps this time next year, we can look at some authorization to allow us to do, go ahead and do cleanup things when you have a couple of weeks left in the year like this. We used to, in the day, at seven o'clock in the morning on the 31st, meaning just to clean up little things. But if we had, we'll research that and find out what that would take so that we could give authorization to my office to go ahead and do those, then come back to you after the first of the year and give you that laundry list, if any, if none, just so that you knew what they were, have that good trust between all of us that we would, you know, be able to get that done. But that being said, oh my gosh, I hope this is all of it. And then I hope we don't have to come back in the first of the year and have to do something with it actively.
Any questions about any of these specifically? I'll ask for first reading on ordinance 2160 by Title Only.
Second.
Motion by Fickers, seconded by Swindler, first reading ordinance 2160. All in favor, signal to the others saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have the first reading, please?
An ordinance, making miscellaneous transfers.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give second and third reading of ordinance 2160 by Title Only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of rules. May we have a roll call, please?
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Ficker.
Yes.
Perky. Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance making miscellaneous transfers.
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Ficker.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 2160 passes.
Thank you. And thank you to my committee members, who, we've been together for a while now and make a pretty good team. Things have run really smoothly. Thank you again, Auditor Vance. I would like to say that I'm sad to not. Thank you all, appreciate your support.
Thank you so much. Is that all you have? Uh, committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. We have several things to talk about tonight. The first is a piece of legislation related to our public hearing tonight. So we're going to discuss changing the zoning of the parcel located over on Progress Way behind the Walmart there. I'm happy to discuss. Don't think there's a whole lot of questions, but let's open it up and see if anybody has anything they want to ask.
I appreciate the supplements from the board authorities.
Yeah, it was, it was nice to have the, have the approval from the courts. Any other questions? Seeing that, I'll move for the first reading ordinance 2161 by Title Only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, seconded by Ficker, ordinance 2161. All in favor, signal to the others saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
An ordinance changing the zoning of real property located on Rombach Avenue and Progress Way in the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Could we have the second reading in our next? Okay, there's one thing off the list. The next one is Resolution 2147. This is, I know how much council loves the word housekeeping, but this is our, our annual bit of housekeeping that authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement to. The revolving loan fund and to utilize a community development block grant. So we do this every year, but I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any. I know we've all seen it before, but any questions? Seeing that, I'll move for the first reading Resolution 2147 by Title Only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, seconded by Swindler, Resolution 2147. All in favor, signal to the others saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing revolving loans. A resolution authorizing revolving loan fund agreement with the Ohio Department of Development.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution twenty-one forty-seven a second and third reading by Title Only.
Second.
Motion second, uh, for suspension of rules, Resolution twenty-one forty-seven. Roll call, please.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Vickert?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Motion passes. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the revolving loan fund agreement with the Ohio Department of Development.
Can you move for passage?
Second.
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Vickert?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-one forty-seven passes.
Thank you. Uh, onto a bit more housekeeping topic, totally. Uh, the next, the next piece of legislation is, uh, Resolution twenty-one forty-eight. In our last meeting, we had an executive session at the end of the week to discuss, uh, um, development, uh, growth opportunity with Polaris. So, um, I'm gonna ask if Mr. Dan Evers from the Port Authority would like to kind of present this briefly and, uh, share. There's a lot of supplemental things here for us all to read, but, uh, I know Dan can give us the very succinct readers digest version. No one's laughing. That was a joke. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I'm right here, I can hear you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, Members of Council, President. I have before you a resolution regarding a potential expansion for Polaris Industries, uh, as we've discussed previously. And as you're all aware, Polaris currently operates an assembly distribution operation at three-four-three-five Airborne Road, which is approximately one hundred and sixty thousand square foot facility in which the company has invested to date approximately looking point eight million dollars, paying approximately seventy-five thousand dollars per annum in real estate taxes and employing eighty-four folks within the city. The project, as it is proposed, would involve construction of an approximately one hundred and sixty-five thousand square foot expansion at the current location, resulting in an invest, a total investment in between twenty-eight point one and thirty-six million dollars. Roughly fourteen to eighteen million of that represents the real estate costs. If expansion is undertaken, the company plans to add at least fifteen employees in a three-year period. New employees would generate approximately four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in new payroll. And all existing positions would be retained. The company has requested real estate tax abatement through the Enterprise Zone Program of seventy-five percent, seven years. The abatement applies only to the value of the real estate expansion existing. Real estate taxes would continue to be paid. The company is also considering locations outside the state of Ohio for this expansion. Happy to attempt to answer any questions that you may have.
I know councils all kind of had an opportunity to sit on this for a few weeks, but, Dan, I appreciate you taking the opportunity to explain it in as much layman's terms as possible to anyone in the audience here who may have any questions. So, are there any questions? This is a, this is a kind of a be with the like because contingent upon growth, which is a good thing, so. I don't have any other, any other thing to add unless anybody has any questions that like, I think.
Any incoming council members have questions? You guys will be voting on this next year. Michael? You okay?
Yep. Okay.
Seeing that, uh, okay.
Uh, Dan, uh, do you have an idea, uh, assuming we pass this, uh, in, in the regular scheme of things, uh, do you know what Polaris' timetable is for a decision?
Polaris' timetable is probably the end of January. Uh, they are pursuing kind of parallel tracks, more than one location, going through the evaluation process. Their target is to begin construction somewhere in April of twenty-twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that, we'll move for the first reading of Resolution twenty-one forty-eight by Title Only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Eblin, uh, first reading Resolution twenty-one forty-eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Polaris Industries in providing for a project and tax exemption pursuant to the state Enterprise Zone Program and making determinations in connection therewith, repealing all prior conflicting ordinances.
That's a potential, very potential for nice development, sir, if that project comes through. I'd like to have our next reading at the, uh, the, maybe subject to change depending on the, you know, timeline of the card with the layers, but we'll see how that goes. Uh, the last thing I have on my agenda is Resolution twenty-one forty-nine. Uh, and I feel like this, if you ask me what we did in City Council in twenty-twenty-one, I feel like somehow it all, or for me, it kind of relates to this a lot. Uh, and I guess I'm, in that regard, happy to have it at our last meeting, just kind of all of this tied back together. Uh, but as you know, we've been dealing with a, uh, a potential housing development to build over in the, the southwest corner of the city. Uh, we've come through a lot of iterations of different ways to incentivize that developer to, to build. Uh, I think we've landed on a, a method that satisfies everyone involved, you know, without, uh, speaking for anyone, but, uh, the, solely because of the nature of time, the developer has a deal with the property owner, and they wanted to kind of feel good about having council support as we kind of wrapped up this year. So, um, I, in reviewing this resolution for tonight, there was something that, that Brad had pointed out that was, uh, mistakenly written. Uh, in section one, uh, it says the contingent upon completion of all necessary steps required by Highway Vice Code fifty-seven oh nine dot four zero. The city of Wilmington will adopt legislation, uh, it should read "may." Uh, and so we discussed possibly amending this to, uh, address that change. But at the same time, I thought, maybe this would just, rather than have a piece of legislation that, that is three readings long, maybe it would just be best if we did a vote of consensus to support the, the process as it is. We've done this many times in the past, and, uh, I think maybe it's just a little cleaner to end the year, uh, let this council kind of have the last say on this project as we move forward with our patch here. So, uh, I know that because of some ups and downs throughout the process, the developer wants to see something, but I don't think that this legislation is necessarily, you know, exact what it has to be, especially since we need to make a change to it. So, uh, is there any discussion we want to have about this?
To amend, make a motion to amend the agenda for that, or?
I mean, effectively, we've actually discussed that, doing that. Effectively, nobody's bringing this up for vote.
Yeah.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah.
And we have the ability to do, you know, a, a motion for something else.
It just is not a motion at a second to actually bring it, which happens all the time.
Yeah.
So we're just disregarding them?
Essentially. I wanted to talk about some of the items on it, but yeah, we're not gonna necessarily vote on that. Just for the sake of the audience here, the, the developer has agreed to use the five-year CRA that's in place, uh, as well as overlay a residential TIF, which does have some, some timeline issues. Uh, there's a forty-five day period that has to go to county. There's, it, the TIF is designed to hold the school's harmless so that it's a, kind of does the best at making whole, all parties involved. Uh, but there is a timeline involved of forty-five days, so that's the reason why the developer really would like to kind of get a big thumbs up from City Council, feeling like we feel this is the right thing, uh, rather than kind of start a new year without this. Uh, as somebody said to me earlier today about something else, it's nice to be able to tie a bow on it and call it a year. So. Is there any other questions or discussion we'd like to have about this? If not, I would move to support the proposed, uh, development deal. I'm trying to word this the right way. To support the proposed development deal and residential TIF that we've discussed at many meetings now.
Second.
Have a motion, second, uh, for, for the, uh, support of the residential incentive plan. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The, uh, motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And thank you, everyone, for, like, like I said, putting a bow on this, because it's a, uh, still a lot to work to do in the coming year, but I appreciate everything that the foundation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perky. Public works. Ms. Swindler?
Yes, we have our third and final reading for ordinance twenty-one fifty-two, uh, in discussion of water rates. And we've obviously discussed this at the last three council meetings, but I know Rick had sent some additional supplementary materials, and there were some questions that I saw kind of bandied between council members and Rick. I just wanted to open it up if there are any lingering questions or unanswered questions.
I, uh, I appreciate the information that Rick got to me. Also, Mary Kay, I have this good information to do on, uh, whether or not, uh, what the coverage limitations are with regard to the, the bond indenture. Um, and I've had a hard time coming to grips with this bracket because there's still some issues that I'm concerned about. However, if you went back over the numbers, going back over the budget in detail that Rick was very good to, to provide, I don't see that much change in the, in the operations budget itself for this year, projected in the, in the appropriations. I do think that, well, let me just put it this way. I'm very interested in what's gonna take place in April, where we go back over this again and see where it's going, because I have, I have serious concerns. I probably would not vote for this, where not the fact that I see inflation getting heated up anyway, probably. Um, and, and there's, there's some areas that I, I still have concerns about as far as capital improvements and the scheduling of those capital improvements and, and how that money's gonna be spent time-wise. But I think you can wait till April. It's only sixteen weeks away. Let's face it. So, uh, well, I had some, some real sleepless nights over whether or not I should vote for this or not. I'm gonna vote for it tonight. And I thank you guys for your, our, your.
I think there's, I think the rate increases in that would be taken likely. We've discussed that in the past. Another thing, we've discussed the philosophy of, you know, I'd rather hit everybody for a dime a year than come actually ten years later for a dollar, right? But I think that, given the, the economy and the inflation is a great point, I think that this is, uh, this is handled in the right way, so.
Any other questions from the council members, members? If not, I would move for the third and final reading on ordinance twenty-one fifty-two.
Second? By Title Only.
Motion by Swindler, second by Vickert, third reading, Resolution, or excuse me, first reading, uh, Resolution twenty-one fifty. All in favor?
Third reading.
Okay, it says three readings, so, uh.
Third reading.
Third reading.
Third reading, Resolution twenty-one fifty. May we have a roll call, please?
Snar?
Yes.
Vickert?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Yes.
All in favor, may we?
Sorry, Mr. President, I received that you, I think I might have heard from fifty-two, correct?
Uh, man, I don't know. This, this says fifty-two. I'm, I'm totally lost.
It could be.
No, I, I got on the wrong line.
I agree.
Let's try twenty-one fifty-two.
Amending chapter ninety-nine of the occupied ordinances of the city of Wilmington in order to provide for increasing water rates, repealing any and all legislation inconsistent with your rule.
Move for passage? Second?
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Vickert?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-one seventy-two passes.
And that is all the legislation we have. Rick did provide a few additional updates just from the water treatment facility and also an update on the wastewater project. Um, as many of you may have seen in your recent bill, we've got the new city utility billing internet portal set up. Uh, so, me and members can go online, pay their bill online, check their water usage, set up notifications for erroneous water usage, things like that. Uh, so encourage you to check that out. Uh, the demolition of the Textron building is now complete. Uh, noted that the contractor is crushing the concrete rubble and the stone, and that should be wrapped up in January. Um, and the stone will be available for other city departments to use as needed. And then the design of the new wastewater treatment plant is progressing nicely, so collaborating with the contractor and the designer, um, and so far, found ways to save about one point seven five million dollars. We're going over every component of the operation to determine those technicals. Uh, so I know that there will be many more updates to that project long after I'm gone, so have fun. Uh, certainly a lot to look forward to there. Uh, so those are the only additional updates I have. I just wanted to thank my committee members, Chris Vickert and Mike Snar, uh, for their work supporting all the work that we've done in utilities over the last two years. And to Rick for his partnership and for his work with the department. I know when I was laughing as you were sharing, I almost forgot in that first meeting that we had years and years ago when, uh, we were still in the midst of fluoride in that early part. And I remember walking into that meeting with my guard up because fluoride was the never-ending problem, just something that seemed to sprout legs every other day. And I remember walking in thinking, I, I, I don't want to have to fight one more person on this. And the first thing he said was, "I've been reading all the minutes," and I thought, "We're gonna be just fine." And you've brought that level of conscientiousness and attention to detail and a thorough approach to everything that you and it has made my job as the chair of this committee far easier, uh, because I know that there is that level of trust. And I really appreciate that level of honesty and transparency that you've brought to your role and to the departments you serve. So thank you.
Agreed.
That's how it should work.
That's how it should work. And, uh, as we all know, uh, or I hope we all know by now, after all the projects that we've undertaken in the Water Department, that surface water, and particularly our surface water, is gnarly, no other way. And I don't know, I, I haven't seen, I don't know how the committees will shake out, but I would strongly encourage whoever serves on the Water Committee next time and hopefully the chair of that committee, uh, spend time not only at our facility, but for contrast, to spend some time at a groundwater facility as well. I know I really benefited from seeing the Springfield Water Treatment Plant to understand, you know, we say it all the time, that surface water is different, and when you see the difference in person, when you understand the difference between extracting water from stone and pulling it from an algae-infested lake, what that difference really looks like, it, it really helps to, uh, provide context to a lot of the work we do. I'll never forget sitting in a room with the EPA and about forty of their various associates and thinking, "I've never wanted to be unique in this particular way" when we have a novel strain of toxic algae. Um, and so, uh, there's a lot to understand about our particular source water and how we have to, uh, treat and guarantee both the replication and processes and just our attention to detail and testing. Just would encourage whoever serves on that committee to really take that to heart because the safety of water is so critical to our community members, so. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you very much, Councilor, for your caring service. And Mr. Snar is going to be taking on the role.
Great. Congratulations.
All right. Uh, solid waste recycling.
Solid waste recycling, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. We do have one item tonight. Uh, it is a recycling grant that we have received from the solid, uh, from the, from kind of solid waste district that we receive it every single year, housekeeping item, uh, Nelson. And, uh, is for five thousand dollars, and we are very grateful for the county for supplying that to us. And are there any questions about it? On that note, I'll move for the first reading of Resolution twenty-one fifty.
Second.
Motion, uh, by McKay, second by Perky, first reading Resolution twenty-one fifty. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution accepting a grant from the Clinton County Solid Waste District, curbside recycling grant and declaring a rule.
Uh, move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution twenty-one fifty, second, third reading by Title Only, please.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of the rules. Roll call, please.
Perky?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Vickert?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution accepting a grant from the Clinton County Solid Waste District, curbside recycling grant.
Move for passage?
Second.
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Eblin?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Vickert?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
I agree with you.
Resolution twenty-one fifty passes.
Uh, thank you all very much. Um, I, uh, I heard at the last meeting that, uh, we wanted to talk a little bit about recycling. Uh, that will, uh, that will fall to Mr. Snar as he will be taking over as chair. He's got a big job ahead of you. You've got, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of irons to fire now. But, uh, I wanna, I would like to thank my committee members for all their help on this, uh, on this committee. And we've, uh, we've tackled some big things, but, uh, we're all moving on, and, uh, I'll be happy to take over city revitalization. So, we'll, uh, we'll move on from that, and thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Uh, that completes our committee reports. Uh, you do have before you the Audger Treasure Report, number, uh, twenty-one. May we have a motion, please?
Moving to be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion second to accept the Audger Treasure Report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Audger Treasure